We are starting on time. Thank you all for being here. My name is Molly DiMarco. I'm one of the board members of Next. We're a community organizing organization that does a lot of work around connected communities, affordable communities, and equity work. I'm excited to be here with three co-host organizations for this forum. John Carrington is here with Community Empowerment Funds. We also have our IFC as one of the hosts, and also Empowerment. But Quentin is here for IFC and Activate IFC. Again, I want to do just a little bit of housekeeping. You may have found it already, but there are restaurants right outside the door and across the hall. I'm really happy to have all the candidates here. Thank you so much. All the sponsors here, and all the people here as well. We are doing a Facebook Live, and it will be recorded, so those of you who have friends who maybe couldn't be here will post that, and you can share it out. Without anything else to say, I'd just like to turn it over to our moderator. We're gonna do a lot in the next 90 minutes and get folks out of here, because we have people that need to get to other meetings. So I am going to hand it over to John Carrington, who is the Executive Director of Community Empowerment Funds. Thanks, Doc.
Thank you, Molly. As moderator, I'm gonna give us an oversight of what's gonna happen. So, I am tools. A lot eats up a lot of time. So cheer to start things, and then quiet, silence your cellphones, please. This is how we will work this evening. Each question will be directed to a specific candidate for response. Each candidate will not get each question, while all of the questions pertain to aspects of transit equity and affordable housing. You will notice a theme of equities throughout, because the most vulnerable and underserved populations among us are the most susceptible to impacts and the least able to spend money to adapt. I will tell you how much time that you have for each question. So, let's get started. We're gonna start with each candidate introducing themselves and sharing one fun fact. You have one minute, starting with our main oriental candidates, and then going down in sequence. Introduce yourself and one fun fact.
Alright, hello, everyone. It's great to be here. Thank you for having me. My name is Adam Siri. I'm a public interest attorney and health advocate for over 30 years. My work has meant that millions of people in North Carolina and around the entire United States have gotten quality and affordable healthcare for the first time. That's not why I ran for council a couple of years ago, and it's not why I'm running for mayor, as proud as I am in my career. That's because I wanted to run to make our town better, including housing, parks, and other areas. And I've supported millions of dollars in new affordable housing funding and multiple projects from municipal committees. I'm proud of the P E Street Departments as a community home trust. But it is streamlined our affordable housing process. And we have a lot of exciting projects that we're doing there now, and then in transit, before our last round of transit. I'm excited to work on those as we move forward. The fun fact, I guess, about me is that I love to ride my bike. I've been doing it for over 50 years in Chapel Hill.
Happy day to y'all, everybody? No? No? Yes? No? 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 Is it on? How's that? Yay! Yay, thank you. Thank you to our hosts for having us this evening. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Anderson. I'm currently a member of the Chapel Hill Town Council, and my other jobs are raising two kids and teaching master students at UNC Chapel Hill. Eight years ago, I talked about the importance of planning for our future together. Since then, I've worked really hard to fulfill that promise. The only way we make shared progress is to bridge our differences and work together. For eight years, I've done just that, listening to everyone, applying data to decision-making, working closely with our community partners, setting solid goals, and then funding more. We have a lot to be proud of, and we still have more work to do. Our next step is implementing our Complete Community Vision, which I got from council just last year. And this plan will create more housing near modern parks, jobs, and shopping, and more safe walking and bike paths for our kids to get to schools. To get this right, we need a proven leader who thinks independently and will work with everyone and for everyone. That's why I'm asking you to elect me to be the next mayor of Chapel Hill. And my fun fact is that I lived in southern Japan for a year and a half. I was at the time, six feet tall. I've lost an inch since then, but I'm still probably about the tallest person there.
And let's start this evening with the other things.
My name is Jeffrey Hopeless. I am currently a semiconductor engineer. This is a fun fact about me. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
John, I believe you're my name. Alright, my name is Jeffrey Hopeless. I am currently a semiconductor engineer, doing the development for new semiconductor chips. I guess a fun fact about me is someone became a published student physicist at some point who's also Horford certified. So I think we could do a fun thing while actually planning a high school program.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I am Renoussa Sol, and I'm running for Chapel Hill Town Council. I've loved Chapel Hill since the day I moved here 18 years ago. It's a wonderful place to live. But like many growing communities, we face complex challenges that need vision to balance our resources across many needs, such as affordable housing and parks. I agree with that vision. My vision for the town goes to five areas: growing our parks and greenways, environmental leadership, becoming a hub for local businesses, increasing affordable housing using evidence-based strategies, and having a town government that listens and takes input. Currently, I'm a literacy tutor for New York Elementary. I have 14 years of public service experience, including serving as treasurer of birth trafficking against gun violence, leader of three local gunfight events to make our communities safer, and serving on a towns' parks' recreation reways commission, which I currently chair. I have a degree from Wellesley College, and I'm being from University of Chicago. I know how to get things done. My fun fact is I've lived in France for seven years and moved there without knowing any French.
Good evening. I'm David Adams, and I'm a 39-year resident of Chapel Hill. I live in Colony Woods, near the American Legion property in the Blue Hill District. My neighbors and I have been directly impacted by council decisions. I'm a scientist. I directed the drug discovery and development laboratory at the Duke Cancer Center for 17 years. I review both research grants and clinical protocols, so I have a keen respect for conflict of interest. I don't accept donations from developers or PACs. I'm an environmentalist, educator, and project manager. I know how to set goals, make budgets, set action plans, analyze data, assess impacts, and communicate results. I base decisions on evidence, not ideology. I'm an observer, like a scientist. I observe what is, and then I ask, "How did we get here?" to inform how we should move forward. I encourage you all to do the same. My fun fact, I am in my 23rd year as the public address announcer for the East Chapel Hill High School men's and women's basketball teams.
Thank you for the opportunity. Again, my name is Breckin Atila Harper. You can call me Breck. I've grown in small towns across the country. My father was a newspaper journalist, my mother a house cleaner waitress. My father taught me about honesty and transparency when we were talking about Harper. She's proud of him, a first-generation college student. In college, I ran for student council, protested for workers' rights, participated in LGD TQIA+ events, led tape-back night marches involved here at homeless shelters. I have degrees in adult education and psychology, currently working as a healthcare IT trainer, while in my free time, offering free money management education and job search coaching. I've worked in many organizations, which allows me to see situations from multiple lenses and create solutions to problems that are data-driven, yet moving center. I'm running for efficiency, environment, and community engagement. Green growth, smart growth, a new leader with a new mission for the future. I put people before profits, community before concrete walls. I advocate for local businesses, the farmers' market, arts and crafts, community events, squash pads, and educational activity for children. I will listen to you, learn from you, and lead with you. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Sharp. Thank you to Catholic Baptist Church for having us. If you want to find out on my campaign platform, it's on my website, elizabethsharp.org. But tonight, I really feel like I want to address the elephant in the room, which is the nastiness that has taken over our local politics. And I'm talking specifically about the Triangle blog, which we all know has close ties to Next, and I hope no one feels like we need to pretend that's not the case. I want you to take a look at the people up here who you're attacking. We are just normal people who care about our town. So when you go after us, you aren't exposing nefarious liars. You're just picking on good people. What if instead of bickering, we started being honest about how hard it is to fund things and what a challenge it is to balance goals like green space and affordable housing? As far as I can tell, the only place we all differ is whether or not it's a good idea to sacrifice the character of Chapel Hill to achieve our other goals. I don't think it is, and I don't think we need to. But these are really worthy goals, and you all are really clever people, and we have them very least meanwhile. So if we work together, we might actually be able to come up with some creative functional solutions. I think that most of you know, and I'll give a hug, let me know if you need one.
Good afternoon. Everybody. My name is Eric Valera. I'm running for Chapel Hill Town Council. And I want to see what brought me here to this phrase. I first started with engaging the town, allowing how the town is not engaging in inclusive care. And I was met with a response that then maybe I should step up. So I did. And I didn't think that they wanted to listen to me, so what did I do? I applied for the hardest board there was, the Planning Commission. They asked me, "Why do you want to join the Planning Commission?" I said, "Because affordable housing is a very important thing that's going on right now, and I feel that my community is not at the table, and we're not at the table, and I want to see it at the table." And I said, "Okay, we're running right." So then I had an interview with the town council people, and I said the same thing. I said, "I'm critical that we're not engaging enough." And they said, "If we agree with you, we'll put you on the Planning Commission." So then I'm on the Planning Commission. And I learned in the Planning Commission what our plans are for this town. And I know that we are preparing for a community that is more people, more diversity, and fewer cars. So I'm running because I'm still a bit skeptical. I'm skeptical because I believe that these plans are very well-laid out plans that may not be completely funded, and I want the negotiation to end up in more gentrification. So I am here because I believe in the plans that we have, and I want to make sure that they're done right. Thank you.
So let me just say I'm the time people. I'm in the minute, the 30 second, and when I stand up, and you can stop.
Thank you. My name is Melissa McCullough. Is that too loud? I have had a 40-year career in environmental protection and environmental problem solving. And the last 20 years of my career at the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency was spent in community sustainability. And now, community sustainability is about balancing, how do we protect the environment, and especially around climate issues? How do we have economic vibrance and fiscal responsibility? And how do we create equitable places? A lot of people don't realize how those three things are integrated. And a lot of people don't realize just how much local government decisions affect the environment and the nature of people's health and people's well-being. The past generations of local government decisions have created sprawl all over the country. And that is best exemplified around here by the fact that 40,000 people a day drive into Chapel Hill because they can't afford to live here. So we need to look at a lot of things together, and that's what I'm about.
Hi, everybody. Oof, that's loud. My name is Theodore Mallor. I am running for Chapel Hill Town Council. We're gonna be talking a lot about equity tonight, so I'm gonna tell you a couple of things. I'm getting 30 in a couple of months, and in order to live in Chapel Hill, I'm splitting a house with another 30-year-old and a 36-year-old. One thing that I did last year was, as part of the grad student government, was get the largest-ever one-time pay raise for grad students who moved from a $16,000 income stipend to a $20,000 income stipend. This town has got to think about how we create affordable and attainable housing. We have a need for housing up and down the income spectrum here, and that dictates what the future of this town will look like. I would not run for this council if I did not love this place and want to stay here. But finding rent, much less an ownership opportunity that's within my means, is extremely difficult. And there are a lot of people, like me and unlike me, who give their labor to this town. And if you're giving your labor to this town, we should be making the highest possible effort to ensure that you can be a part of this town when you're not working too. That's something I care about a lot. That's a big reason why I'm running for town council. I look forward to talking more with you tonight.
Hey, everybody. How you doing? Beautiful day today? Thanks for coming out. I appreciate it. I'm Amy Ryan. I'm the only incumbent councilwoman for office this year. Before council, I served on town boards for 15 years. That means I know the town, I know the issues we face, and I know how to work with my colleagues to get the results we're looking for. And over the past four years, those results have been real. Since 2018, we've created and preserved a record amount of affordable housing. $20 million invested, 131 units created, almost 1,000 preserved, and 800 more in pipeline. To address the critical under supply of housing, we set a goal of creating 500 new units a year. And we passed hazard choices to allow more housing types in our simple-family neighborhoods. We're taking real action on climate, developing the Triangle's first climate action plan, switching to electric vehicles, and doing smart land use and transit planning. And we've got a new five-year budget strategy that lets us plan in smart ways for the future. We've invested in our parks and brought housing up to a full penny this year. I'm really proud of what we've accomplished. I think the town is headed in the right direction, and we want to be on council for four more years to see where we get there.
I go by John, by the way. My mom calls me John. John Mitchell. I'm a banking lawyer, part-time stay-at-home dad. Been in Chapel Hill for eight years. Also been on the Chapel Hill Planning Commission for two and a half years and just finished up the term as chair. Creating better development outcomes for the town is what I want to do. Comes down to quality plan, as boring as it sounds. We've got to fix the way we plan to get better outcomes. That means a few things. Moving away from a car-oriented development and toward walkable neighborhoods that are served by transit and railways. Needs making sure that housing we're building serves the broadest swath of residents and workforce members that it possibly can. More broadly, it means fostering a town that our kids and grandkids will want to live in and can actually afford to. That's how I measure success. Fun fact about me, my primary mode of transportation is my e-bike. And since March, when I bought it, I've walked just under 700 miles.
Thank you, everyone. We're gonna start with our first questions. So half the candidates will give 90 seconds. The candidates that will be answering this question are Adam, Gray, David, Melissa, John, and Jeffrey. Question is about community affordability. We see people experiencing homelessness every day in our community. What have you already done personally to provide assistance to people who are on fixed incomes, are low-income, or have no income? And how are you going to make sure this specific population is being taken care of now and in the future? Let's start with Adam. And how much time do I have? 90 seconds.
Well, I think the first thing we can do is make sure that our partners here at IFC have the funding and the resources they need to make sure that they can do the job they do. And so we did a couple of things this year. We, for the first time, put some Chapel Hill money out of our general fund into the operations there, and I think that was a good thing to do. We also rejiggered the plan for the IFC operations to make sure that they can serve the highest number of people that they're able to within the facilities that they have. So I think those are both great things to do. The other thing we do is partner with, and I support those initiatives completely. The other thing we do is partner with Orange Accounting, make sure, instead of just cycling people through our legal system, that we approach them when they're in distress and get them the services they need without them in positions, and we're doing a good job with that, and I think we need to look at that more. So beyond those things, I think we can do some other specific tasks. The first is, I support it, and I think I hope we build it as quickly as possible. Our Trinity Court downtown housing project is aimed at some of our lowest-income residents. It's a great project. It's right here, Step Park, and you can walk to downtown. So huge support for that around the community, and I think we're... Yes? Sorry.
I thought I was standing up.
I'm sorry. I thought you were standing up.
I was standing up.
Yep. Oh, yes, and please stand up, because I'm a little... My attention is specialized. First, I lean on our experts. So where I can't know everything, I want to learn everything I can from those who have that expertise. This is why the individuals around me are letting us this late. We have Elizabeth Sharp, who is a local business owner of two restaurants, and really understands what the needs of the local business are. David Adams is a researcher and knows how to find data-driven decision-making, and also has built petitions to save Legion Park and support the environment. We have Renoussa Sol, who is on the board of Carson Rec, as well as Adam Sieren, who really understands the budgetary needs and also the affordable housing needs that will continue to drive us into the future. Second, because we can't know everything, we need to learn the facts. This year alone, we have displaced over 400 residents in affordable housing units, which is a nice word for a victim, for luxury apartments. Affordable housing for these in the own ways workers are to be transferred onto a space paid for with heart bonds by draining most of the pond near us. The rest of the pond will be fenced off for wildlife and public use like fishing. So finding places that are equitable and safe for people is important. Additionally, we need to speak to the town council, which is something that I've done multiple times. And we need to listen to our people as we go around the community, such as I do when I'm walking by dogs. Last, we need to stop funding external consultants. We spend on average $3 million a year, or more, as a conservative number, on external consultants from places like Canada. Why can't we use local talent such as UNC to help us build and design where needed? And last, we need to not squander your property taxes. Thank you.
Amy?
So I'm gonna go back to the question of what I've done about homelessness, et cetera. Of course, I'm not part of the county government or the city government. I am a member of the United Church of Chapel Hill, and we have a very close relationship with the IFC. In addition to providing food, we're big in raising funds for the men's shelter over there. I actually remember the choir actually saying at that dedication service, and I actually wrote about it in one of my articles, because the number of organizations that got together to make that happen was, to me, was remarkable. And I think that's the game plan. I want to tell you also, because I have a friend through my wife who works, actually works, to prevent harm with homeless people on the streets. And I'm hoping to connect more with him, because what he's telling us is these people are desperate. And I can understand that, and I want to help that. So as far as moving forward and, you know, what we can do as a town, we can certainly support IFC, we can support Habitat to build housing, and other nonprofits that can build housing. And finally, I think we ought to look at, I just saw this, and if you didn't see it in the N and O, where Wake County is partnering with a group, and they are converting hotels and motels into affordable housing with treatment properties. Thanks.
Melissa?
As far as personally, I've always been a very big supporter of Porch, ICF, and other efforts in the community to help feed especially children who are food insecure. And I think that's incredibly important. But as far as what we can do in the future, there are so many, there are different levels of going into the whole homeless problem. And the first thing we need to do is to try to help with the intervention, get people off of the streets, especially those who have mental health issues. Luckily, we have the good crisis program that the police work with and that work with services in the town. And we need to make that more accessible and have more in the way of the social services people working with the police, so that that doesn't end up in a confrontational kind of thing. But then we need to have more services in terms of bringing those people out of crisis and into introductory homes. And so I'd like to see us do more creative things. We have shelter space, but we have very, very limited shelter space. Sometimes it's difficult to get to. So we need to have more areas for people to live, especially men, who is a majority of that population, and be able to have places for them to go. It'd be good to have, for example, micro unit buildings and other possible innovative ways for people to go when they are able to emerge from these crises.
John?
It's my time. Thanks. So as far as direct involvement, I'm a Porch donor. I've participated in the Habitat build recently. Used to do that in DC as well when I lived there. As far as low-income folks, one of our main letters is to approve good housing projects when they come along. Hopefully, we'll get a good one on the eight to nine acres out of 37 or so acres available at Legion Property. I also want to draw a connection between housing and transportation here. Along all income strata, up to about 150 grand a year, between 15% and 20% of pre-tax household income in the United States, including in this area, is spent on transportation, mostly car transportation. So one of the low-hanging fruit available to us to decrease the cost of living, not just the cost of housing, to improve our transit and to improve our greenway system so people can get around without driving.
Catherine?
Well, the best way to try and solve a problem is to see if another place has done it before and been successful. One of the best examples of successful homeless problem being dealt with was Salt Lake City, where they just built homes for them. They essentially built a central hotel. The bottom floor had all the surfaces they needed, and they gave each individual who needed one a hotel key that they were allowed to go in and out of as they pleased. As far as what I can do myself, sometimes, if I have time, I'll talk to them, treat them as human. I usually carry candy around to give them if they're actually hungry. That helps them all the time.
Our next question will be answered by Jess, Elizabeth, Eric, Theodore, Renoussa, and Amy. Chapel Hill is, or is becoming, unaffordable for many members of our community across the income spectrum, leading to displacement, which contributes to sprawl and increases vehicle miles traveled to get to work and school. What are other ideas to assist all of our members to be able to remain living in our town? We'll start with Jess.
Yeah, thank you for that question. And I wish I got the last one, but I'll take this one too. I think what we are doing with our Complete Community Vision... I think what we are doing with our Complete Community vision is the answer to this problem along with a lot of other partners and a lot of focus and a lot of hard work. We are reducing sprawl, we are talking about building housing into nature along greenways that will be connected across the community. We're talking about having our affordable housing overlay that specifically targets the needs of our hard-working residents and folks that we say that we want to live here, but through some of the actions of the past, it's really hard for people to stay. And of course, this is a very desirable place. We live here because we love it, but it also leads to people being often exploited. But I think Complete Community has taken this into account. This is where we spent $300,000 on one of the experts in the world on this issue from Canada, and then we immediately got a million-dollar grant for our greenways. So we tripled our funding on this in a couple months, and that's why we are strategically hiring some of the best people in the world, not because we're wasting money on out-of-town consultants, but we are getting the best people in the world to help us, and then what we bring to the table is our character and what we need here locally on the ground to make Complete Community a reality. It means that people can get safely to work, schools, parks. Eighty-one percent of our residents can already get to a park in 10 minutes, and we're going to get back up to 100 percent. Yes, Mr. Lawrence, that's you.
Well, maybe take the mic.
Elizabeth?
Hi, thanks. So I actually think that one of the things that we need to do is make sure that our solutions for affordable housing are really targeted at the problem, rather than trying to enact solutions that are applied really broadly and may not end up with the results that we want. So for instance, with the recent single-family zoning text amendment to densify our less dense neighborhoods, I don't think that you can find an urban planning expert in the world right now who doesn't say that we need to densify our neighborhoods, and I can fully get on board with that. I can't get on board with our town being a profit center for remote real estate investors who will degrade the sense of community in our neighborhoods. So I would really like to see a similar measure applied solely for affordable housing or even workforce housing for specific groups like teachers and firefighters. Let's really pin the action to the solution we want to create. And then I also think that one of the best things we can do is quit trying to use the free market as a way to solve our affordable housing problems, because if we keep trying to do that every time we do something that makes our town better or more pleasant, we just make it less affordable to be here. So I think we need to take affordable housing out of the market, quit trying to, like, mess with supply and demand, and just actually create good, well-maintained, well-integrated public housing for a broad margin of income brackets, so that it's diversified and we don't create pockets of poverty.
Eric?
So the affordability problem is not just a Chapel Hill problem, it's a national problem that needs local leadership in order to be able to respond to it, and that's everywhere. But we need to deal with that locally, and it's our responsibility. We own this. So the affordability problem, we have not built very much over the course of the last decade, decade and a half, and that has brought the prices up. If you own a home, your equity has gone up. Try to prove it different. If you rent, your rent has gone up, but your wages are likely staying the same, so we're getting pinched everywhere. So the affordability problem really has to do, has, needs to be addressed from many different standpoints. If we are, we need to be able to pay the people that work here enough money to live here, and that's a responsibility of our companies, of our university, to be able to provide them with the wages that they need in order to be able to live close to work. And so the, I distracted about the 30 seconds. So in order to be able to address this affordability problem, we need to be able to deal with not just the housing issue, but with also the wage issue that is impacting us, and some of that is just also preempted by our general assembly. So we need to push back against the general assembly, we need to push back against the university, and we need to make sure that we have wages that accommodate our schedule as well.
I want to echo a couple of good ideas I've heard. You know, Eric's point about this being a national problem is exactly right, which is why we're needing attainable as well as affordable housing, and I think that's one reason that I support the idea of the increased density across the spectrum. And we unearthed a designer on staff who's been helping us think about how to do that in large and small projects in creative and attractive way. John's point about the transportation costs is also one that I agree with. When you think about how we get to and from places, that is expensive, and we can make that less expensive. I'd like to see the town do an e-bike rebate, by the way, because then when it's hot, it's 80 out there in the summertime, and you've got to go up a hill, you might actually do it online. I think we have an opportunity to partner creatively with the university. I'll give you an example. I told you I got a $4,000 raise for folks last year. Well, one of my friends in the English apartment just got a $300 per month increase to his grant schedule for next year. So that $4,000 turned into 400 overnight. That's the kind of problem that we're dealing with here, so I think we've got to be creative in how we work with the university. We've got to be creative in how we try to evade the strictures of the state, because the affordability problem is a subsidy problem, and it takes millions and millions and millions to solve it. We need help from our state, we are not in a position to force them to give us that help. We do not have the allies that we need, so we have got to be extremely creative as we pursue that. This town has put a lot of money, what, nearly 22 million, into creating affordable units. That need is huge. We cannot turn off the faucet when we're already just dripping into the bucket.
Renuka?
So we have thousands of units in the pipeline. I think our problem isn't actually housing, but it's affordable housing. And I want to create the right types of housing using evidence-based strategies to meet the needs of our community. Some ideas. We absolutely need to partner with UNC. They need to house their employees who earn lower wage, make some workforce housing on their land, and we need to find a solution for the student housing, so, and get the student, the housing the students want. I would also like to look at our supply of affordable housing and not see our lower-cost housing being redeveloped into luxury apartment buildings, as we have seen happen in the Blue Hill district. I would like to tweak or remove the form-based code in Blue Hill, because it doesn't require any affordable housing. We've been building a lot there and not getting anything for it. I think we should negotiate with developers for affordable housing. We can trade off density for more affordable housing units, and also try to move towards zero carbon buildings. And I would also think about increasing the inclusionary zoning units of affordable housing in downtown to 15%, as it is in other parts of town. Now, I think every single person over here cares about affordable housing. We just disagree on how we think we can get it done. So I would like to talk about that, single-family zoning and the text amendment. I don't believe that's going to give us the housing we want. I don't believe they're going to give us affordable units. I read about this, according to the Urban Institute, it's going to give us more units in the higher-end range, and we, and there's no such as called significant, I mean, evidence that we'll get the lower-cost units and have more, less expensive housing. And that's where I think we really need to focus. We have limited resources, and we just, oh, sorry. Thank you.
Amy?
Thank you for this question. So the first part, how do we help our neighbors remain in town? At the recent council meeting, we had to deal with this issue directly, the Kings Arms Apartments. It's owned by private landowners in this country and in the state. Private landowners have the right to do things to their land, so it's, so we have to address that. And council was really clear with them that you are taking some very important naturally-occurring affordable housing, and you are going to turn it down to affordable housing. And we need, you need to come back to us not with a site plan, but with a solution for these people. So in the past, I don't know if, this is a long time ago, Glenn Lennox very successfully worked with the people who were going to be affected by redevelopment, so a lot of those folks could stay there and could stay there at the rent that they were paying. We also have, at the Parks Department, when that redeveloped, the town stepped in, we worked with our community partners, we held apartment fairs for folks so they could have, they had people come in so they could find a place to live. We helped with deposits, we got money from the developer to help with deposits. So, and I think bringing UNC to the table is also very important. They create a lot of our affordability problem. People who live there don't, a lot of them don't make very high wages, and they own a lot of the land in town. I'm really happy to report that the town just got a $5 million contribution from UNC Health to a revolving loan fund, which will help the town. If we see opportunities for a naturally-occurring affordable place that's going up for sale, the town will be able to help step in and buy it and transfer partner and keep it there instead of turning it over to the private market. So I think that's going to be key moving forward.
All right, this is our lightning round. So let's turn to ready to use. For this next question, you can use a paper pen to get it. So here, and this is for all candidates. So here's the question. Chapel Hill just passed a housing choices for a complete community, AKA missing mill ordinance, and Carrboro is poised to follow suit. What do you think of Chapel Hill's policy? Just right, too much, or not enough? Sure. Chapel Hill just passed a housing choices for a complete community, AKA missing mill ordinance, and Carrboro is poised to follow suit. What do you think of Chapel Hill's policy? Is it just right, too much, or not enough? Write your answer and hold it up. Get your answer in the word, "just right, too much, or not enough," and after you talk away from some camera. All right, give your answers. Thank you. So we'd like to talk about how we get around. So these are transportation questions. Half the candidates will get two minutes to answer this question. Those candidates will be Amy, Renuka, Theodore, Eric, Elizabeth, and Jess. Is there anyone in your family or your life, it could be you, who uses Chapel Hill transit on a daily or weekly basis? What did you learn about transportation challenges our community faces from that person's perspective? Let's start with Amy.
So I have a couple of good friends who are vision impaired, and so they no longer can drive cars, and they use the bus system to get around to different things in town. So one of them lives in far southern Chapel Hill, and another one lives over near Booker Creek. So for the friend who lives near Booker Creek, he lives about a nice half-mile, three-quarter-mile walk to Eastgate. He can get on the trail, he can go by himself, he doesn't have to rely on a car, and he can, he can just walk there. So I think our new everywhere-to-everywhere greenway network that the town is planning is part of our complete communities, that will help one part of that transportation piece. So my other friend who lives in South Chapel Hill tries to ride the bus, and unfortunately, it's very difficult. Our bus system is set up as kind of a hub-and-spoke system, so if you're a student who lives in, along MLK, and you're trying to get to class, it's great, it works for you. If you're coming from a park, it's, or from a park and ride, it's great, it works for you. It takes her two, two and a half hours to go from where she lives to get to the library. So it's not really a very effective transportation network for those needs. So that's it. That's not a dig to our transportation system. We spend a lot of money on transit, and we have a really, really good system. So I think it's just, as one of our colleagues says, we clench way above our weight in a lot of things, transit and bus transportation is one of those things. So for us to say we can have a complete bus network through town, I don't think so. We can have a great bus network, and then we're going to have to do other things as well. So we have our Easy Rider, which helps folks who are disabled or elderly get around with more point-to-point transportation. And again, we're going to work on those greenways, so if folks would like to walk, have an alternative to a car.
Renuka?
So I have a son who doesn't have a car, and prefers public transportation at all costs. He will rent a bike, take a bike, he will take the bus system, he will find other ways of doing that. So I do know what his day is, but I also want to talk more specifically about my experiences in Chapel Hill. I, I don't live that close to a bus system, but I have walked there with my daughter. Remember, we're getting there on a Sunday, saying, "We have plenty of time, let's go downtown," and then I realize the buses don't run on Sunday. So part of the problems are also in hours, the routes, having more routes that they can go. For people who work, it's hard to get to work, because we just don't have enough hours for, when the buses are running. So we need to think about all that, and I think in addition to that, we also need to think about moving out of Chapel Hill. I would love to have subway, a bus, or a bus rapid way of getting to the airport, or getting to South Point Mall, or to RTP for people. I know there was a neighbor whose son was going to high school in Raleigh and was taking the bus, and it was really difficult to do, and the timing, and he had to really plan this well, but we can make it easier. I'm, I think it's great that the buses are free, at least that barrier is gone, but we need connections, and I think connecting also the greenways to make it easier to get to bus stops or get to other places you have alternatives to get out of your car, because it is important and it is an environmental issue. Thank you.
Theodore?
I have this question. I live a block from Mannan Hill, just a block from the Temple Garden where I'm renting, and there's not a bus that comes near me, and I biked up Mannan the other day for Bike Social. Let me tell you, it scared the Jesus out of me, because there are cars flipping around that thing, and, you know, I'm up there, huffing, huffing, trying to get up, not fun. So I would love to use this system more. I know a lot of other people would like to use it, and let me tell you, I've been out knocking doors, and I hear the same thing that I heard Amy saying when I knock a lot of these doors. I was over in Southern Village the other day, and folks were saying, "I'd like to get from here to the library really easily." And I talked to students who say, "I'd like to get to the grocery store really easily, and I'd like for my ice cream not to melt by the time I get home," you know, "maybe they should get some vegetables too," but that's inside the point. The point is that there's a lot that we can do, you know, I talked earlier about wanting creative partnerships with UNC. The reason that we're fair-free is because UNC pays for half the cost of the bus system. I mean, we do have the opportunities to capitalize on our relationship with the university, and it was the vision of one of our mayors, how early that this system came into being in the first place. The fair-free model is great, the greenways are going to help us, lots of us want to be using these systems, there's room for expansion, it's a great asset for our community. Looking forward to hopping on it one day with our services even greater than it is today.
Eric?
When I first moved to Chapel Hill for a summer, I had on a bus, I didn't know it was free. I just stood there, asking how much it is, and he was just like, "Just go." I didn't really know where to go. I loved taking the bus when I was working at UNC. I would take this bus every day, I'd make friends on their friends that I still have today. Then I got a new job, and then I moved, and the bus system became less convenient. If I wanted to go visit Theodore for some ice cream, I would have to take three buses to be able to get there. So the convenience factor of it needs to be, it needs to be convenient for everyone, whether you have a car or not, in order for it to really take hold and make this part of our culture. And also we need to be able to have, make it more and more direct. So these micro transit experiments we've done in other cities, where it's kind of like Uber Pool, where you would have it on an app, where you would tell them point-to-point where you wouldn't want to go, and then it takes, if it would take you along a route to pick up other people that are going along that same route, it would be less expensive than it were, it would be a lot more ethical in terms of the, in terms of the driving, and it would be a lot more direct and convenient. I would prefer not to drive if I didn't have to, but it's, but it really, it becomes a, it becomes a matter of where am I going, and how quickly can I get there?
Elizabeth? So, oh, excuse me. So the people in my family who use the bus are my children. They use it probably once a week, and they think it's the greatest thing in the world because they can hop on They use it probably once a week and they think it's the greatest thing in the world because they can hop on a free bus and they have so much freedom. And when they call me and say, Mom, can you pick us up and take us to this place? And I'm like, no. They're like, okay, we'll get on the bus. So that's fantastic and I love that they have that ability and that, um, you know, independence. I will say that there is absolutely no way that the bus system would function for my transportation needs, which are getting to work and back. There is not a bus line that runs anywhere between my house and my jobs that would not take a long, long time. Taking three kids to different, three different schools in the district, um, different activities. I mean, you simply couldn't do it. Um, so I know that for a lot of people, bus transportation is not, is not really practical or reasonable. And that's why I would love to see our bus system be helpful with us in some of the ways that Theodore talked about between Southern Village and the rest of town. I know that we're working on that. Um, but one of the other transportations I would really like to see worked on is our bikeability. I can bike to town, really, that has given me, I can bike to work really, really easily, but I don't do it because it feels really unsafe, even though there's now a crosswalk over, um, Fortin Boulevard. I feel like I'm going to get hit by a car. I tried to take my driver to do that the other day and it was terrifying. Um, so I don't bike nearly as often as I should because it's really scary. Um, so I think that I would really like to see in addition or maybe perhaps even instead of greenways for bike paths, I want to see, um, bikeability integrated with our roads so that we, people can get to places they actually need to go by bike.
And Jess?
Hi. I, um, I have people that are really important to me in my life who do not have access to a car, who cannot drive a car, um, and who rely on the bus system or they walk. Um, I have, um, somebody who is with my children right now, who, um, you're welcome, all of you for not reading this. Um, who is a member of my family, um, and not, and not by blood. But I have people that I really love and care about who rely on these services and I am lucky enough to be able to drive, which is not lucky for the environment. Um, but what I know, um, is number one, that, that this family member is rent burdened and lives in a dilapidated studio apartment. And then still is not able to get from here to there on a bus system because it involves connections. It doesn't run on in the evening. So you might be able to get there and you can't get home without potentially taking an Uber or then investing a huge amount of money in getting home. Um, Sundays are a no-go. Um, and so this is a really challenging way to live. I grew up on an amazing bus system and I took it everywhere. And I was an eighties kid, so I was allowed to take the bus by myself when I was seven. Um, and, and it was amazing. Um, that being said, um, I am very well aware, even for our Easy Rider folks who do qualify for a private van to come get them, there are still challenges. You're not able to get it when you need it necessarily, you have to reserve one in advance and then sometimes they're late. All that being said, I think it's really important that the mayor also bring hope and plans and solutions. And so as much as this is a great question, I also want to say our staff is amazing. Our bus drivers are amazing, our transit director is amazing. And we have a phenomenal partnership with the university so that we have students and others who can't afford it taking our transit system, which is going to be amazing when we get BRT delores.
All right, our next question. Walking, biking, and taking public transportation are largely equitable, sustainable, clean, and accessible forms of transportation. Studies have shown that people who walk or travel by bike spend more money in the local economy than people who drive and that accurate transportation in general improves public health. What should the town do to promote and increase safe and viable options for people to bike, walk, and take public transportation to their destinations? This question will be answered by Jeffrey, John, Melissa, David, Breton, and Adam. And let's start with Jeffrey.
Well, the first thing to actually make walking and biking safer is to actually have the laws enforced against the cars, lower the speed limit. When they violate that or go to bike lanes, actually ticket them and they're parking in the bike lane. Have them ticketed, discourage them from doing this. And that actually involves enforcing those laws. No, I do, I do like to walk around. That's one, something I like to do most weekends here. So, but yeah, that's the best way to make it safer is start enforcing when cars start violating the laws that make it dangerous.
John?
Thank you. Um, a couple of things. Number one, our development patterns. Um, I'm running on our new planning framework, which is called the Complete Community Framework. And a core idea of the framework is that, uh, instead of just plopping down big buildings absolutely around town where there's not a lot of, uh, transit or greenway connections, we're going to build, um, what you could call a complete neighborhood, walkable, mixed-use neighborhood with a variety of housing choices where people can meet not all of, but a lot of their daily needs within the walk shed and those they can't meet within the walk shed. Maybe they have to drive a couple of times a day. Um, but they can also get on a bike and within five or 10 minutes, maybe three minutes if you're on a e-bike, be at the grocery store, be at a coffee shop, be at your workplace and so on. Um, another thing we need to do is build that everywhere-to-everywhere greenway system to make that possible. Um, Elizabeth, right, some of that's going to be on roads, but not primarily. Mostly we're talking about utility, these mixed-railcarrying buffers in other areas that are very much separate. Um, between your kids and a Mack truck, there should be quite a lot of space. Um, or people aren't going to use it to get to school. Um, we just got, as Jess mentioned, pulling down a grant, planned 25 miles of these things. Think about a transformational benefit for the town, 25 miles of new greenways.
Melissa?
Um, I feel like Amy the other night where it's following after John and somebody said all the good stuff. Um, because that, that really is a lot of it. The everywhere-to-everywhere greenway system is going to be critical. I want to, um, say how great it is that the question emphasized the fact that the more you make a community walkable and bikeable, the better that is for your local economy and your local businesses. Because we've seen that happen all over the country. Um, another thing that we want to do that hasn't been mentioned as much is to do much more on the way of micro mobility, especially on-demand micro mobility. And that would be e-bikes, um, share, uh, scooter share, those kinds of things. Um, we want to get as much of this, um, bike and, and micro mobility traffic off of the streets as possible. Because if a, if a, um, mom and a little, uh, trailer bike or a little kid who's just learning how to ride a bike can't take it safely and feel safe, feel comfortable, then that's not really a usable bike and, and ped, um, infrastructure. Um, you know, another thing that we want to do is to look at our roads and our sidewalks, our streets, I should say, and our sidewalks. We want to get more towards complete streets and that means that, um, a street will have perhaps a, a separated bike and multi-use path beside it, like we are doing on S Ds right now. Um, that those feel safe, but also to do things on our streets like, um, bump outs on corners. If somebody has to cross across the five-lane road, even if two lanes of those are parking, people do not feel safe crossing the street. Uh, if people do not feel safe crossing the street, they're not going to use that. Um, so the, uh, the one last thing is how housing density, um, and densification, gently and dense, um, are going to help with, um, getting people easily to things.
Amy?
So, my, um, as I said, I'm an observer, my observation is where I live. Uh, I live just off of Ephesus Church Road and we have a painted, uh, bike lane and it runs, uh, basically, it doesn't even get to the roundabout, um, where, where you can get on to, uh, continue on, uh, towards the east. So it starts and it goes down to Fortin Boulevard and disappears. Uh, it has no barrier between, it's sort of painted, paint job, so it just has barriers. So it's not a safe option and I think that's what's happened in a lot of Chapel Hill is our, our, our safe biking space is fragmented all over. And I really think that, that could be dealt with, um, more, more effectively. Uh, it turns out I have a brother-in-law who really got into the Safe Streets organization to the point where he was recognized by the governor, uh, in Missouri for what he was able to accomplish in Kansas City. And that was exactly what he worked on, was to really, really work on safety. Let me also point out that I live in Collingwood's, we have no sidewalks. There are a lot of neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks. And that's a very simple, uh, solution if you want safety in, in terms of walkability. Our, we walk in the streets all the time. I walk dogs in the street and I'm always looking over my shoulder because it's not safe. Thanks.
Breton?
I am so excited for this question because I am an adult cyclist. Um, to begin, in 2022, last year, um, I celebrated my survival from breast cancer by cycling 300 miles in Asia. So that was awesome. Um, I actually do go to town hall, a town hall meeting, start in my bike and I almost died on roller skating. One of my last times that I went to the town hall, so yes, it's not safe. Um, as a side note, it might be helpful to tell road cyclists that not biking is not the same thing because my ego allowed myself to break my arm while trying to impress my boyfriend's friends in January. Um, ha ha, check it out. Um, so to begin. The recent law day fair, wild bus development has, has internally impacted our communities. Culture, traffic patterns are less, are less thorough. Dwindled tree canopies and green spaces and it needs to stop. Developers do not care what they build, where they build, or how they build it. They want to get in, get the most bang for their buck and get out of town. It's our responsibility, uh, our responsibility to make sure that what they're building, where they're building and how they're building is safe and allows for access around town. I lived in Port Royal for five years and saw firsthand how you can have density without disorder, parks without endless pavement, bicycles, and I see potential for, uh, for, I see potential for city brought property to encourage competition with developers to offer the most community output, maximizing green spaces and interest our certification. Shared biking programs, current bus stops with overhangs, as well as improving signage will be helpful. I also think the complete communities is helpful and has some good concepts. However, the current, uh, the current process is actually going to be pavement-driven and actually increases runoff. Did you know that for one inch of rain, only 750 gallons of runoff are created? Whereas a sickening 27,000 gallons of runoff are created within one acre parking lot? The same applies to paved greenways. Areas across the country like Tennessee and Oregon are using crushstone, permanent papers, and even recycling materials. There is a way to do things right, efficient, and better.
Adam?
Thank you. Um, I've been commuting my bike in Chapel Hill for my entire life. I used to ride along about a block over there up to Phillips Middle School every day. Uh, I also, I used to commute into Chapel Hill High and one memorable day, I was, uh, turned back in a snowstorm by the bus monitor who was turning the buses back. So I've commuted in rainy, sleet, snow, hail, and I know the challenges. Um, protected bikeways and greenways are really the way to go. Um, and the more of them we can build, the better, absolutely. Um, but at one to $2 million a mile now, closer to $2 million a mile, um, how can we accomplish that in a town that is experiencing the budget issues that we're experiencing and they are severe? It's difficult to come up with that amount of money. We can get federal grants, we can get, you know, federal participation, but it's not easy. Uh, well, what's exciting is that towns and around the country are supplementing their paved greenway systems with this new technology to build more natural service trail systems as a way to increase equity in the transportation network, um, increase business development and enable, um, much quicker building and connecting of multiple neighborhoods to the main greenway system and to other critical places like, you know, grocery stores, parks, that sort of thing. One example is Old Fort and I encourage everybody to go look at what they're doing just up the, um, road here at I-40. Uh, there is an amazing equity-driven, uh, project which has brought the community together in fantastic ways, increased business development, um, you know, led by, uh, community development corporations and it's just fantastic. And so we have a lot of examples around the country. I think we can combine our new protected bike lanes, paved greenways, and also, um, really step up without stepping up in cost our, uh, connections in ways that will fundamentally transform the way we can get around. And that means wheelchair, um, you can build these to ADA standards just like you can to paved greenways, um, bike, walking, whatever you want, it's, it's all there.
Thank you. All right. Our last question is related to campaign finance and goes to everyone. We'll start with this then, and go down. Um, political action committees have spent money on political campaigns in North County, for example. Our co-host Next spent $378.78 on endorsement postcards via their action fund during the 2021 election. However, there have been reports recently of an unprecedented amount of money flowing into this election through PACs, $120,000. Even putting aside the issues these PAC donors seek to influence, it's obvious that this degree of financial influence will decrease representation for the most marginalized community members in the selection cycle. How will you approach your campaign in August to make sure that wealthy donors earn out over record money?
No, I only accept money from people I talk to. So that's one thing you can filter out via the website for donations. So if it's someone you don't know, you can just reject it. And as far as anything else, they will spend their money on what they want to spend it on, I can't stop them. But, yeah, I don't know much about this at all, I've not heard anything really about it.
Adam?
Well, like, uh, this question reminds me of the movie Casablanca. I, everyone is shocked, shocked that there's money in politics. Um, you know, I would note first that people are often much more shocked when the money's being spent on their political opponents than when it's being spent on themselves and on operations that benefit them. Um, but look, while we all know doubtless that the North Carolina General Assembly hadn't forced Chapel Hill to drop its public financing program for campaigns and that this US Supreme Court Citizens United decision hadn't allowed the proliferation of 501(c)(4) dark money groups who can take unlimited anonymous donations and make essentially unlimited expenditures even in local elections and that the state and federal elections commissions more strictly enforce the, um, existing laws, this isn't the case. Money in politics at the national and state and local levels is here and that decision's been taken away from us. So I say the same thing to everyone who talks to me about a PAC like the Chamber of Commerce's or the Home Builders or the NAACP's or even talks to me about one of these anonymous dark money groups with me. Our campaign can't and won't coordinate with these groups in any way. We will not take money from them, we will not work with them, that is the bottom line. I then explain the issues that I'm running on, how to volunteer, donate, and help my campaign. That's what's going to win a campaign in Chapel Hill, that person-to-person interaction. And that's what I'm focused on.
Renuka?
Um, I also want to start by saying that I am taking no money from developers and no money from PACs. Now, the situation, um, oh, and I also want to, uh, say that I'm not coordinating with any PACs or developers or any of those parts, so both things. Um, when you mentioned that situation and I read about it too, to me, it just seems very hypothetical, like a bunch of people were wishing something. That just seems like a lot of money and I can't really see that happening. Um, and I don't think it's practical. So to me, I feel like talking about this, it's like talking about a non-issue. It's just something that somebody just had in their heads and, and hasn't happened. I don't think it will happen. I don't think we've ever seen something like that happen before and I don't expect it to happen. So, um, I just feel like it's a lot of talk about, I mean, something like a, a kid is wishing. I mean, I wish for a lot of things too, but I, I know that some things aren't real, so, thank you.
David?
So I've already mentioned that I don't take money from donors or from PACs and I don't coordinate with, coordinate with them as well. I don't coordinate with them as well. I'm still concerned with money coming into our system, and I, you know, Citizens United was a disaster from my point of view. But that's it, you know, that's the world we live in. What I think is unfortunate, that we have a political blog out there that's putting out sort of hypothetical cases that they hear from somewhere. And for the media here that are here, I'd like to just say, the TBB is not a legitimate news source. They are not, they are a political organization. Why do I know that? Well, just look at what they write, number one. Number two, both TBB and Next are 501(c)(4) organizations that do not release their donors. My understanding, and I could be wrong, is when Next was formed, they actually got some money from Donna Bell after her campaign, and that money came from developers. It was packaged by Roger Perry. That's my understanding. I would welcome the Next folks to explain their position, to explain their relationship with the development community. As I said, I'm trying, I am staying away from that, and I think that's what everybody should do.
I was asked about this from Tar Heel recently. This was not published, unfortunately. Recently, a breaking, disturbing news, Fox-style news alarm, was sent out by a hypothetical PAC with an urgent plea from the sender to donate money to her campaign. It is unfortunate that smear campaigns, dark money, and shadow groups disguises nonprofits or influences Chapel Hill politics. The North Carolina legislature designed PACs to build transparency, however, our slate does not accept PAC or developer money. If this is a registered PAC, which is not, if you pay attention to the news recently, perhaps the North Carolina legislature would know more about the situation. I wish I could help, but I have no names or contacts for you. I would love to hear more background on the situation or story before being asked about my impact in it. My father was a newspaper journalist and manager. He taught me to investigate facts before disseminating information to the public. I'm running because Chapel Hill needs collaboration and cohesion. We need healing, local business, green growth, workforce, and rural housing, parks, and grout, and most importantly, we need transparency in our government and public input ahead of decision-making. I will continue to move forward with integrity and honesty. Let's step up the hill.
Hi, thanks. So this is interesting because I think it's an issue that, it's something that really gets blood moving quickly around the country right now, right? Because we've all seen the way that money has influenced elections at the national and local level, and like, you know, the Koch brothers and how they've messed with North Carolina politics, and so I think it's something that we all get really heated about really fast. And so I hate that that's sort of being used to manipulate the way we feel about our neighbors who are running for office. I can tell you what I told the Daily Tar Heel, which is, and other reporters who have asked us about that, I have not spoken to anyone from a PAC, I do not know anyone in a PAC, I have not taken money from any PACs. And I am raising money, one awkward fundraising conversation at a time, just like the rest of us that I think are. I'm just a normal person running for office, and for all the hype there is about big money flowing into this election, those of us in this room are probably more tuned into it than anyone else. I don't see the evidence of it. Where is this like giant war chest campaign being run? None of us are running that. We're running pretty normal local election campaigns. So I just, I think there's a lot of hype that's being brought to our town from outside and being applied someplace that it's not appropriate, that it just, it isn't true.
But I can show you the evidence. I have to leave because there are too many lies.
I'm sorry, will you tell me what the lie is? I am not lying.
I can show you the picture.
Will you show me?
Yes.
What, how I've taken money from a PAC or a...
The Chalk PAC.
What are the Chalk PACs?
It's purely to do literature. I am sorry, but I can't take the lies. I'm sorry.
I actually turned down a donation from the Chalk PAC, and I can show you that evidence in my email. I said, "No, thank you, I am not taking money from PACs."
Okay. Let me just...
No, ask maybe, no.
Yeah, no. Deanna?
Eric?
Um, no.
So, hello, hello? Yes. I think that there is a correlation here when we look at disparities, when we look at wealth disparities, when we look at racial disparities, and when we look at political disparities, and the question is, why would people want to put a PAC together that has so much money? What is the influence that is trying to be put on this election, which I think brings a lot of attention and makes this a very sexy election to want to be a part of and to want to be, and to want to pay attention to? The, the, the fundamental question here is, do we want a community that is exclusive or do we want a community that is inclusive? So if you want a community that is inclusive, then you raise money small bits at a time, as each one of us do, because we have $357.00 limit that you could give to, that you could give to our campaigns. Otherwise, you know, this influence that is coming from outside is trying to weigh heavy in one direction or another. What PACs don't vote, money doesn't vote, you vote.
Melissa?
I want to take it in a little bit different direction. I was talking to a student this morning, just a journalist, a student looking for a question from her journalism project, but we were talking about the rumors of the PAC, and one of the things that made me very sad was that she was saying that some of the students are saying, well, how do they expect to have a voice? They have no money. And too often, that's the perception nationwide, and sometimes it's the truth and sometimes it's not the truth, that people can win without the money, and I'm talking nationwide right now. I think that we have a discerning community, and I will hope that every voter will look at every candidate and what they stand for, and what they say, and what their records are, and what their expertise is, and make up their minds that way. But I think part of the question that's really important is how do we make sure that those voices without money are heard? And I think that's a matter of going outside of our usual range. I'm not going into Northside doing fundraising, but I am trying to reach out to other communities that are not often heard to listen, and I've had some really fascinating conversations at the Heart Grapes Center. And so I think it behooves us to reach out to all Chapel Hillians, and I think it behooves all Chapel Hillians to really examine every single candidate. Thank you.
Well, let me give you some facts about my experience. I don't have any facts about the conversations that anybody out here other than me has had, so I don't know what anybody else is doing. But I'll tell you one thing, the way a PAC works is not that it coordinates legally with a candidate. I mean, the point of a PAC is that you can give more than $357.00 to a group that spends money on behalf of someone else without talking to them. I don't know if anybody's going to do that or not. I have not been a part of those conversations, but that's how that works. So whether or not people are coordinating with them is just dodging the question. Now, here's another fact, I make less than $30,000 a year. I do not have any grad student friends who will give a PAC $6,000 even if I ask them to. I have zero who could do that. I can tell you I've had conversations with people in historic districts who told me they'd been asked to contribute to this and had agreed to do so. I'm not going to name any names because I don't know if this thing exists or not. All I'm telling you is, I've talked to people who said, "I have promised my support to Adam Serin and his slate, and I will contribute to a PAC in order to make sure that that happens." I am not saying that I know that that is real. I'm just reporting on a conversation that I have had. That's all I can do. I'm not taking any money from PACs. Nobody can take money from PACs as far as I guess you can do some sort of donation thing, I don't know how that works, but I'm not going to have to make that choice because I don't have one that's going to give me money. So that's all I do.
I, I am offended by this issue. I am. And it's not because the PAC is being organized against me. And, and let's be clear, I've seen the emails. This is not something that I would share out to anybody if I hadn't seen them myself. And then it was verified by the NNO and the Daily Tar Heel. And then again, today, it came out that the funds will now be funneled through Chalk PAC because the original PAC was uncovered by the news media. So it's not about me. It's really not. As a resident of this town, I'm not okay with wealthy people engaging in grievance politics, running our elections. And, and I have some questions. I really do. I have some questions about what happens if the slate gets elected. So what if they don't all get elected? Who do, who do they work with? Because they said they can only work together, and they can only do all the things that these wealthy, single-family homeowners that I guess have to be over the age of 34 to be relevant for even bothering to canvass them. Apparently, they don't have anybody below that, so then what happens? Does the PAC tell them how to vote? Who runs this whole thing? Who runs the government? Is it run by the people who've created the PAC? Or is it run by the individuals who all have to vote the exact same way to get those wealthy homeowners what they want? That's not what I want for my government. If it's not me that the people of Chapel Hill choose in November, that's okay with me. But what I'm not okay with is our government being in such dysfunction that people can't work together and that wealthy people over duplexes, y'all, duplexes. I grew up in a duplex. It's okay. Nobody is taking your home from you. Nobody is, monsters aren't going to live in next door. It's not going to degrade your community. What our community is, is those people that are being pushed out and that are being told that they're not welcome here because they can't afford a single-family home. And that is absolutely not okay with me. This is not personal. This is about who we are, and I know we can do better than this in Chapel Hill.
Okay, well, again, a little disadvantage from following that, but we'll, we'll just say that, you know, Chapel has a long history of not liking a lot of money in their elections. When we could, we used to have a public elections fund, we have a $357.00 max donation limit. When I talk to people out of state who are friends, and they say, "Oh, let me write you a check," I'll say, "Well," they laugh. They're like, "That's not how politics work." Well, in Chapel Hill, that's how politics works, and that's how we wanted to be. We want folks who are running for our local offices to go out to meet people, to talk, and to actually get support from the people that work in this area. So I think that's a really important value in town. I think it's disturbing that a group of people have decided to go around that system and take advantage of it and pour a lot of money into, into trying to get their way. So I think it's great that we have council that has stuck to their guns and said, "We know these things are right, these are our values, and we are going to protect our values." And I hope we have a council that will continue to do those things. So I think it's really interesting that I've been reading all the major reports, and this thing's going to happen, and also it's not happening, and it's kind of happening through the back door. So I think these people feel ashamed at some point, and I think we need to continue to make them feel like this is not the Chapel Hill way of doing things. And just to close, agree with the blog blog, disagree with the blog blog, they show their seats. I think that they do factual reporting. So, thank you.
So my main concern is that people fully understand what they're getting so upset about. Has a choice of proposal for a two-family configuration, it's not triplexes, not quadplexes. Maximum size of duplex, 3,000 square feet can be attached or detached, can be higher than a single-family house can currently be. Can't be bigger than a single-family house can currently be. Normal setbacks apply. Duplexes are subject to higher requirements in certain areas than a single-family house, and the areas of impervious surface can't have as much impervious surface. You'd have more tree canopy, allow less parking, allow fewer unrelated persons in a household than single-family. Based on the dozens of other towns that have done this before us, we should expect incremental changes, not overnight changes that are vast in any particular neighborhood. Very incremental, it's one of the biggest criticisms of it, it doesn't do enough. ADUs, granny flats, whatever you want to call them, sorry if that offended anybody. Already allowed in 2017 in the whole town, ADUs, so that's, that's not a new thing, there's sixty-some on them in town, so I just want to make sure. It's okay to dislike and disagree with certain town policies, but let's make sure we're talking about the same thing.
Everyone will be given a chance for closing remarks, have 30 seconds. Let's start. Yeah? So, okay, 30 seconds.
Well, my main, it's really, my thing was, no reselling this redevelopment because redevelopment is how people get kicked out. With a town that's over 50% renters, any fiduciary who owns a place will need to tear down and build duplex. That's what they're going to do to make the most money from it.
I'd just like to say that we've been doing a pretty good job here the last year, couple of years here at Chapel Hill. We have over 800 apartments that are coming in the southern part of the town across the Southern Village, 150 new apartments that we voted for approved downtown with retail, new townhomes, 119 out on the Homestead Road, so we're building a lot. And for me personally, what I love is meeting with people, reaching out, anybody, I've met hundreds of people in the course of my duties in the campaign, and I just would like to invite anybody who wants to talk to me and sit down, please just reach out and talk. I have a lot of ideas, and I'd love to hear yours as well. Thank you.
I raise my family in Chapel Hill and over here, but it feels like it's losing its way. Our parks are looking worn, we don't have money for maintenance, much less create things that our residents are asking for. Our residents should need to join a private club or travel long distances to recreate. It's about equity. We talk about greenways that we don't build now. We spend millions of dollars on consultants to develop beautiful plans, but we don't execute them. We build the wrong types of housing in the wrong places where we could build affordable housing that meets the needs of our community. We need new leadership with a new vision. Renew your town with Renew and vote for me, Renew, Placenta, or Chapel Hill Town Council.
Just a couple of observations, I'd like to make more, but have you looked around town and seen what kind of housing is being built? We have thousands of units in the pipeline, only 10% of them are missing building. As I said, that's an observation, it's a factual observation. So I asked, "Why isn't it? How did that happen? Look at our parks, they're bad shape, how did that happen? Were you surprised, like I was, to find a town that has $60 million in deferred needs for core services like police and fire, and now we have a 10% tax increase? Ask yourself, how did that happen? If elected, I will be a delegate that listens and represents you, not a trustee. I ask for your vote to answer some of those questions.
If you leave anything today, I'm just asking for you to believe what you see and not what you hear. Check your facts, check your data, and ask if you have questions. Even though we are running this slate, that does not mean you have to vote for every single one of us. This is a nonpartisan election. I want you to find out what works for you and what you feel is best for the town. I'm running for efficiency, community engagement, and the environment. We need more town apps and the ability for people to connect instantly so that we can access people who don't have the privilege or time to drive downtown to attend a community meeting. I'm here. My name's Breckin, I'm just a local. Let me know if I've got questions. Thank you.
So I spent most of this morning feeling really encouraged by the things that I was hearing from all the candidates on this day, I can't believe, like, if any of us get a like, we already have the most viable town anybody has ever seen. It's amazing the ideas that I'm hearing from people, and I love how much agreement there is up here. That's so encouraging. I am so discouraged that somehow we still fall into fighting about things that aren't even true. You're letting people make things up and work you up and pit you against people who are literally just people who raised their hand and said, "Let me serve our town." What I really wanted to say, though, is that I love living in a town with like-minded people who prioritize taking care of each other, but I will have to say that if we are not financially viable, we will never be, have the economic latitude we need to live by our ideals and create a town that represents them. we need to live by our ideals and create a town that represents them.
30 seconds. I want to thank our host, and I want to thank all of our candidates for being here. And I especially want to thank all of you for your attention. I am running, I'm leading this campaign with inclusivity, safety, and affordability. Inclusivity, I'm an artist. I want to see arts be uplifted. I want to see our diversity be honored and celebrated everywhere. I want to see safety. I want to see lockdowns. I would prefer to have social workers more than cops, but I know we need both, one to prevent, one to respond. We have wonderful people who are not, who are not officers who are working with the police department. We want to honor them. And affordability. Affordability is not just about the cost. It's also about the wages. And we need to work together to be able to have an equitable community.
Hi. As I said, I've spent the last 20 years of my environmental career working on sustainable communities, looking at the environment, looking at equity, looking at the economy. And I think that one of the things, we all agree that we have lots of things we need. We need lots of affordable housing. Our parks need work. We've got green ways we want to build. We have to use our financial and fiscal responsibilities in order to be able to have the funds to do that. We need to diversify our PAC space. Ah, ah! Sorry. Yeah, throw the question. Anyway, I want to put my expertise to work for all Chapel Hillians, because we all do better when we all do better.
This forum's about equity, so I want to tell you about some resources you should share with our community. The county has a program for long-time homeowners. We do property tax assistance. Share that with people. The town is looking, working on programs for municipal employees to get help finding housing in this area. We have a transitional housing program that we're looking at funding to help people. There's a crisis diversion facility that we are trying to get put together, I think probably up in Hillsborough. That's a place for people to go other than jail and hospital when they're in a crisis. All of these are important things that the town and our partners are working on to help people. That's what equity is about. That's what I want you to take away from this forum.
Okay, Steve Toppin. We have a lot to be proud of. We've rolled out our complete community vision to ensure we will be diverse, inclusive, connected, and sustainable for all. We emerged from COVID in great financial shape, and we are bringing people along with us with our revival plan. We adopted the first-ever climate action plan. We brought UNC to the table on housing and a vibrant downtown and jobs. All of this work has earned me endorsements from Equality NC, the AFL-CIO, and the Sunrise Movement, as well as five Chapel Hill mayors, including the honorable Senator Howard Lee, who started our PAC system. I've also been endorsed by 20 current local elected officials, spanning boards. With your vote, I promise I will work collaboratively, tell the truth, and be a mayor for all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you again to our sponsors for holding this and for everybody who joined up tonight. So times are interesting in Chapel Hill. We're part of the fastest-growing regions in the country. Old ways of life that were good for some aren't good for any others. It's our responsibility to face these truths and make sure that we're building just, sustainable Chapel Hill and a place that cares for everyone. I love doing the council job. I do it by listening to the community, all the community, by consulting experts, digging into the facts, and balancing competing interests to reach good outcomes for us all. I think we've made great strides in the past four years. We've got ambitions for great things to come. I hope you'll support me for reelection so I can be there and make it happen.
Thank you. Dolores, I'm going to try to go on long enough to get a standing ovation from you, which I've not got yet.
And the clock starts now.
To create places where we want our kids and grandkids and nieces and nephews to live and where they could potentially afford to live, we need to plan. But it's real work. It's not the same as campaigning, happily in my case. The absence of planning creates outcomes that none of us like. I'm running to help the town plan effectively. Check out JON, J-O-N, for ChapelHill.com. Thank you.
See ya. I see Next and Empowerment. Would like to thank all our candidates, our volunteers, and Binkley Baptist Church for putting this on to you. Thank you.